This is Mylan, I'm checking in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the regular session of Goldendale City Council for February 1st, 2021. We'll begin with a roll call and silly interview will report that.
Okay, Andy?
I'm here.
Phil?
Here.
Lauren? Mylan?
Here.
Kevin? Kevin? Shannon?
Here.
Julie?
Honey, Julie was not feeling well, so she might not be joining us.
Okay.
Okay, try the other two that didn't answer.
I see him. Lauren?
I'm here, Connie. Thanks for trying again.
Okay. Is that it? I think that was it.
What about Kevin?
Kevin. I see him, but he's not answering.
Oh, but he shows up there. Okay, then he's here.
I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, so Julie's the only one done.
Okay. We need a motion to excuse Julie Buck from...
Silbo, Mayor, this is Mylan.
Yes?
Second. Shannon?
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Julie Buck from this meeting because of illness. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Aye.
Aye, Connie.
Aye.
We don't have a public hearing, but we do need a motion now to approve. Well, I need first to amend the agenda that we were about to consider. An amendment is to consider to include a presentation by Tony Gilmer from EMS.
EMS.
EMS. Yeah, sorry, I just got them a number scrambled. Tony Gilmer will be giving us a presentation and that needs to be added to the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
You have Phil Berto's request as well.
Oh, that's right. And we also have amended the agenda to include a request by Phil Berto on Tavero's concerning moving funds from the EMS account in our city budget to the fire department. And he will present that request when we get to the council business. Do we have a motion to...
Move to approve the agenda with amendments?
Lauren, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda and consent agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? If not the agenda, then consent agenda passed. We'll go on now to presentations and want to introduce Tony Gilmer. He's on the line for EMS. And he will be introducing another EMS representative. Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and staff. It's been a while and I have been negligent in my reports. Since we last met, we have replaced Chief Brandy. He was our chief officer. And I'm proud to introduce Will Harriman, who is in attendance tonight, replacing Bruce. He's done an excellent job of picking up the ball and we're going to make yards, I'm sure, in his tenure. I'd like to report on seven additional items, of which I'll be brief and maybe even vague. So we're open to your questions. Will will be able to put a little bit of meat on the bones and you'll get to hear it direct from him. Number one, I want to remind you that we are servants to the county, to the cities, and we want that partnership to be a success. So don't hesitate ever to call us and we'll talk through what we're thinking and try and forge those partnerships solid. Number one is a new ambulance. Since we last spoke, we were able to pick up a closeout demo model. It was not spec'd for any high standards. It was not a custom job, but it saved the county a significant amount of money and I'm very proud of our abilities to pick that up. The fourth car, which is a promise that we made to the citizens of the county and cities, and I'm going to let Will speak on that because it is near and dear to all our hearts and he has a plan that we're trying to implement. However, I remind you, just because we collect those tax dollars doesn't mean that we can flip a switch and turn these things on. It's something that we are building towards the future. Number four on my list was excellent discussion with Chief Noah regarding the life pack. We... Will will have some items that he can share with you on that as far as discussion items, but I understand the challenge that faces the city using fire tax dollars for EMS is what I'm referencing. I know that there's been a question on coverage, that there have been some unique calls as of late and for us to maintain the coverage, I know that you've actually seen or heard that the White Salmon car has made it to Goldendale. Primarily, whether it was planned or not, Goldendale is important to us because of the lack of mutual aid available to back us up. So White Salmon goes then, Dallasport goes then, Goldendale cannot afford to. So our last ambulance will always end up in Goldendale. We had a good discussion with the chief about resupplying and I have confirmed that when items are used on an incident, we do intend to honor that, keeping the partnership supplied with items that were used. Two remaining items in closing, I want to put a plug in. We are hosting another EMT class. That's important to all of our communities and it's important to the ambulance service because we build our own employees and there's nothing better than having local homegrown EMTs on the service. My last item is that there is a possibility of a board position on the EMS board that's available for the Goldendale area. If you know of somebody in the community that is interested or would like to talk about it, feel free to give them my phone number and we'll talk about the availability. So my last item is to introduce Will Harriman, our new chief of operations.
Welcome, Mr. Harriman.
He's on there, but I think he...
My little hand wouldn't activate the unmute button. Good to meet you all. Wish that it had been sooner, but as we all know, COVID has made things difficult to have face-to-face conversations, which I think are the best to have. So just a little bit about myself real quick. I've got about 37 years of EMS experience. Started as a volunteer, worked my way through paramedic school, became a paramedic. I've worked in rural systems, I've worked in urban systems. I actually have done per diem and I worked a short time with Clickittuck County EMS. So I do have experience with this system and I think that was something that I could offer the district with my experience within Clickittuck County prior to taking this chief job. Tony listed several items. It's up to you guys how you want to do that. If there's something that you guys really want to talk about, we can open it up and you can ask me questions or I can try to go through each item. Whatever you think is the best way to use our time.
Thank you. Council, do you have questions for Mr. Harriman? Any questions on the life pack that we're trying to obtain?
No, Mayor, this is Mylan. How much are the life packs? Twenty?
This is Will. The district has been recently have been purchasing refurbished life packs that run $20,000 to $25,000. My preference is to purchase them new and then get the preventive maintenance programs on them. They tend to last longer and physio control, which makes them is a lot more agreeable to providing service and upgrades. So I'm not sure about the equipment that you guys are currently using. I think it's a life pack 12 and I don't know if your agency bought it or if it's donated by the ambulance service.
That would be a twelve.
So it's a life pack 12?
Correct, and it's on loan.
Okay. And one of the challenges with that is that those are really no longer supported by physio control. It's going to become harder and harder to get batteries for them. For the purposes that you guys are using them, I don't think you're going to run into the fact that they're not being serviced as long as you're not counting on the defibrillation portion of it. If you're just using the blood pressure and the anti- CO2 or pulse oximetry, that's fine. But I would not count on it for defibrillation. I'd always have a current AED available with the life pack.
Noah, does the fire department have the equipment for defibrillation? Someone with a heart attack?
Yeah. Yes, we do. Yep, we do. And we currently, the life pack is a life pack 12. It's on loan. Batteries are poor, I guess, doesn't last that long. But other than that, everything else keeps on checking out good on it, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Harriman?
Yeah, what is the plan for that fourth car going forward? Or what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
The recently purchased unit is going to replace... We have two vehicles that are not really suitable for remount. This recent purchase will be, so that adds to our ability to continue on with the replacement plan that was implemented a few years ago. Up to that point, rigs were basically reaching the point of breakdown and then being replaced. And so a lot of money was spent to upgrade the fleet. And so now we're trying to get into a replacement model where we're moving vehicles through and we're remounting them, so we're only buying a new chassis and using the box. So that vehicle that we just purchased is going to go into the rotation to replace the backup vehicle that's currently in Goldendale. Fourth car issues, I mean, it's not a matter of having a vehicle that could be available. It's a matter of staffing and up to recently, we had several openings in the department. We had people leaving for a variety of reasons and we're just recently getting fully staffed. So it is very hard to find paramedics right now. Partially due to COVID, partially the amount of paramedics that are looking for long-term careers, so they end up in fire service. Pulling qualified paramedic applicants out into a rural system like ours is difficult. I mean, a lot of our employees that we count on are people who've gone to school, who've lived here and have stayed. And then we have some people who we've hired outside of the area that commute. But to have somebody that can help with staffing like a fourth car, you really need residents to do that. And so what we're doing right now is setting up a program where people would sign up for transfer call and we would like to get that covered on a regular basis. We're also encouraging people through a financial incentive to come in off-duty to staff an ambulance. And our goal is to be able to take those transfers and not stress our nine-on-one system. As opposed to hiring a whole nother shift of people that... That would be very expensive. We're trying to find solutions that pinpoint the problem and address those. And so that's where we're headed right now. We'll see how that works. Until we try it, we won't really know. But our goal is to provide as much coverage in the Goldendale area as possible. As Tony said, we're very sensitive to when that ambulance gets toned out. A second call is almost right behind it a lot of the times. And so Dallasport's rolling out to head that way, but then that causes a delay. And then when there are two back-to-back calls, which is almost impossible to staff up to on a regular basis, you know, that third call that comes out, you know, White Salmon at that point is moving towards Goldendale and depending on how quick that third call comes out, that's going to determine how long it takes to get there. Currently, we have four staff members that live in the Goldendale area. So that isn't really an option to try to get them to come into staff, a second car for those calls. We could try, but that would be relying on, you know, people being available and being at home. And with only four members living in the Goldendale area, that's kind of hard. That's why we're very dependent on the volunteers to provide that initial response stabilized and then we can work towards how to get that person to the hospital. But currently, we do have two vehicles that are capable of transporting in the station at Goldendale. It's just more of a staffing issue.
We appreciate, Will, your explanation of that situation. It's something that's really hard to handle for probably each of these cities around the county. And EMS is a really essential part of this county. We're glad you're there.
We have a person in the audience that would like to ask a question.
I understand there's someone in the audience that's listening in that would like to ask a question. Please do so.
Hello, hi, this is Thielen Wheeler, 409 East Main in Goldendale. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I was just calling because I wanted to see how many of these you were wanting to purchase. Well, actually, first of all, to go back, thank you so much for everything you guys are doing and I'm so grateful for all of this. I understand that you did just buy this new truck and I really do hope that it serves its purpose. And I think it will. I know it will, living where we live. As far as what you were talking about, about you just wanted... I would like to hear your breakdown of all the things that you guys actually need. Because you offered that in the beginning, you know, to just kind of lay it out for all of us and then we could respond, but you also offered, you know, for people to just directly drop in and say what they wanted to say and I appreciate that a lot. But I do want to hear your breakdown of all the things that you were thinking of, talking about tonight. And then how many of these, the first thing that was questioned at $25,000 per unit? And I understand that you can make it work if you don't buy a brand-new one, but were you just thinking of purchasing one?
Is your question directed towards the ambulance service or the fire district?
Well, the fire district and the ambulance. Well, both. I mean, isn't...
The ambulance service isn't in need of any of these. We currently have adequate amounts on our ambulances and on our backup.
Right, here in Goldendale?
In Goldendale, throughout the county. Both rigs that are in Goldendale have life pack 15s that we need out on calls.
So I would like to hear the rest of your breakdown of the other things that you wanted to talk about as possibly needing. Because I can see that, yes, that is a necessity that we should probably look into getting before one of the ones we have does completely break. And $25,000 is a lot of money, but what else did you have on that?
I basically just had some notes on the topics that Tony had brought up. Our goal in being here tonight was to provide any information to the council that they might have on some issues. We're not really looking for anything for the department. We just want to make sure that the council was updated with all the current things that we're involved in and if there was anything that we could help Goldendale area with.
Okay, well, okay. So mostly you need volunteers though, too?
I would like, I would encourage people to join the local fire department, to be volunteers, because that's a stable force within your area that's always going to stay there and help you. The ambulance service moves through the whole county and primarily there to provide the transport and the paramedics for that transporter. So the stronger that the volunteer agencies are in the county, the better EMS system we have overall.
Well, no, I agree. I agree. But I also grew up here my entire life. I mean, I moved here in 1989, went to elementary school in Goldendale Centerville, then back to middle school in Goldendale, graduated in Goldendale, moved away a few times, but always came back. Now I'm in my 40s or about to hit that point. And I know what we need out here and we definitely need more EMT service.
Okay.
And more of all of that, absolutely. I mean, the best thing that any one of us could do is invest in that one company that does lifelights, the insurance for it. I don't even remember the name of it, but yeah.
Yeah, getting a second...
I have my own history here and I did lose someone at a very young age, right here in town, near the old church over by Darland. And that was just the ambulance trying to get from the hospital to there and that's like not, but our town isn't that big.
Yeah.
But having just one, we have to have other remedies, other ways of transport, other ways of courier service. I mean, do we have to call it a courier service? How do you have to name it to get something else?
Well, let me talk about some of the other areas of the county and why Goldendale is such a challenge. In White Salmon, we have mutual aid with Hood River Fire Department and they have ambulances and they'll come over and run a call in that area. If we're out, like if we're covering Goldendale, we'll call them over. Same with Dallasport, we call the Dals over to help cover those calls. Goldendale is isolated. There is no mutual aid ambulance service that's close enough to really be of assistance. And that's why we will send our last ambulance to Goldendale as opposed to covering those other areas because we'll utilize our mutual aid to provide service to those people. One of the challenges that we're trying to address in the future is the station that we're currently in will not house another crew. It's very small and it does not adequately meet even...
I know, and we need to figure something out. I don't know what to do because it breaks my heart. The person that died in my life died right here in town because that ambulance couldn't make it in time from that, from White Salmon. You know what? And then in a different instance, someone I know survived and lived in this town because that was the only ambulance that made it and it came from that far away. So I'm on both sides, both sides.
This is Phil Berto also. So the other topic that I brought up last council meeting and...
Thank you.
We'll be talking about it later on as well. Covers the other part of your question regarding the equipment for the fire department. So I think, so that's a separate issue for the...
Well, I think if we need to fundraise, I will fundraise on the side for you.
I appreciate that and thank you, Will, for answering that. That's it. Definitely paints a better picture than I was able to paint last time around, but definitely that mutual relationship is what makes us stronger, especially for our small community.
Okay, well, I won't take up any more of your time. You understand how passionate I am about this too and I'm so grateful that you guys are all working on this right now.
I appreciate that. I'm there with you.
So if you need my help, I will help fundraise. I will do whatever it takes. Put up little booths and let people drop pennies in them. If that's what it takes to get that equipment.
I think that's a great offer.
If that's what it takes to get another transport service, a renter.
Thank you so much. We're glad you called in.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're more than welcome. If you can reach Noah Hom and work out how to contact each other and how to work together on the fundraising, I know he'll be interested to support all that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night. You guys, I'm going to be listening. Bye.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Will or for Tony?
Mayor, this is Noah. I just want to say thank you to Will and to Tony. Tony, we had a great conversation about everything. He kind of mentioned upon some of it here tonight. And Will, your paramedics and EMTs are always good to us. They show our first responders, EMTs, if they need to know how to do something, they show them right there as they're doing it and they're always supportive and show appreciation for what we do. So thank you for coming in tonight and doing this for the council.
You're welcome. Absolutely. We appreciate both of you. We appreciate both of you coming or at least voting in and, uh, we look forward to working with you, Will, and we enjoy ever so much the cooperation Tony, uh, continues to give us. Appreciate it very much, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please don't hesitate to, to reach out if, if there's something that we need to be working on with the EMS or that, uh, you would suggest we do to, to make Goldendale stronger on this ambulance service to be able to, uh, help that isolation, um, challenge that you have with Goldendale. Appreciate that, that type of really candid information. Thank you both.
You're welcome.
We'll go on now to department reports and we'll, uh, begin with Goldendale Police Department. Fire, uh, Police Chief Jay Hanzacher. Jay?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I only have one thing tonight and I want to go over, just briefly explain. I'm not going to go into great detail and you'll understand why I want to get into it. But we, I received an email from one of the prosecutors out of the Clickitack County Prosecutor's Office about an investigation that Corporal Lucutaro, uh, investigated. This was quite a lengthy case. It was a very big case, uh, and for our area, our side of the case, this involved, uh, child pornography. And the case started, was, uh, was reported to the Goldendale Police Department on August 28th, 2017. That's when this investigation started. Uh, this, it, through investigation, it grew to where there was incidents that we can link it to, to, uh, child, uh, molestation type charges out of Tennessee. And the prosecutor was notified our office today that the suspect that was in custody and going towards had pled guilty to the Washington State charges this morning. Um, the maximum sentence that this person can get, although he has not been sentenced yet, is 10 years for the charges in Washington State. The, uh, after the court does their thing as far as Washington State goes, this individual will eventually end up in Tennessee to face the charges back there. And information received back there, there's a potential that this individual received 50 plus years for the crimes back there. Back onto, uh, the prosecutor's email about Officer Lucutaro, uh, he emphasized that Officer Lucutaro went beyond the scope of the investigation, which he sought out search warrants for a certain item of evidence to seize it and then another search warrant to have it, uh, forensically examined. Uh, and we're talking just an electronic device that had photos. With that, way he handled that and secured it with search warrants was critical in retaining that evidence through the courts without losing it as an evidence being get excluded because something was done wrong. This was all done right. And that piece of evidence, mainly the iPod, it was what won this case and it forced a, a plea agreement. So Officer Lucutaro did an outstanding job. You're talking a case that was approximately three years, five months long and it was not a pleasant case to investigate. So he did absolutely great. The prosecutor was very pleased and wanted me to pass that along. Okay? That's all I have tonight.
We really, really appreciate how far sighted Officer Lucutaro was as well in the involvement in this case. Had he not had that, uh, it could have ended very differently.
Yes, it would've, it would've ended differently. He took it upon himself to get those search warrants, uh, knowing that we better get these secured and tied.
Great preparation.
No, he did excellent job, excellent job. And that, that email, uh, will be placed in his file.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, very much. We'd like to hear from Noah Hom from the Goldendale Fire Department. Chief Hom?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just wanted to, I don't have too much tonight. All I wanted to say is that, um, so for the first month, we are at 20 calls and to put it in perspective, we're at 20, or excuse me, we're at 10 fire-related calls and 10 medical-related calls. So, um, I mean, it, it's always kind of been, you know, half medical and half fire and we're kind of seeing that right now. So, um, that's all I, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Noah. Appreciate the work on the LifePak too, very much. We also have, uh, Justin Lee on the line to give us an update on planning. Justin?
Sure thing. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, nice and clear.
All right. So, um, I have two things. The first is that on the land use side, uh, we had a site planned from Ben and Karen Perez for their mobile food court and we issued a notice of decision and this morning approving it. A notice will go out, there's a 14-day appeal period for anyone that is seeing, pursuing that, but, uh, basically, um, that's a green light saying to go ahead and, uh, kind of move forward with their development project. Uh, we're really excited. They're gonna move their, uh, taco truck and I, I know they bought the, uh, the diner truck from the other, uh, proprietors and they're gonna move those over to, uh, the parcel that's just east of Pioneer Surveying on, uh, East Simcoe there. And I do believe that the Simcoe Coffee, uh, that Mr. Loomis is running is, is gonna be there too. So it's gonna be a nice little mobile food court, um, development and, and we're excited to see that, you know, their businesses grow and we're excited to see that another positive development happening in, in town here. So, um, and this, so that, that update, is there any questions about that process or the decisions that we made before I move on to the next thing?
Counsel, any questions or comments to Justin Lee?
Uh, thi- this is Phil. I just wanted to make a comment. I'm, uh, really happy to hear that it's moving forward. I know, uh, the Perez family is very, uh, proud of the work they do. They, they, they do an excellent work and everything they, uh, get themselves involved in. Um, I've seen the, the plans and I'm actually really excited to see, uh, that block or that intersection of weeds, um, developed into the, uh, the truck food court there.
Good. Thank you, Phil. Anyone else? Go ahead, Justin.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Phil. I mean, we're, we're excited too. It's great to see businesses grow and, um, I'm glad we can, we can facilitate that. Um, so the next thing I have, um, is kind of lengthy. I apologize for that. I wanted to follow up on a matter that was brought up during the Monday, January 4th During that meeting, as you may recall, council was asked to vote on whether to renew my contract to perform land use planning services for the city of Goldendale. During that vote, amongst other things, Lauren Meager abstained citing a conflict of interest. In the discussion that ensued, Lauren stated how he felt my underlying application to the Central Clickitack Conservation District Board created a conflict of interest that would in turn compel him to resign from his position. Now, as a background, it is true, I applied to volunteer my time to serve as a board supervisor to the Central Clickitack Conservation District Board. And as I stated in that public forum on January 4th, in response to Lauren's abstention, and which I really want to reiterate right now again, it was not my intention to create a conflict of interest, nor to have Lauren resign from his post on council, but rather having a cr- come across the notice of vacancy for the board in this position, I felt, I mean, with all sincerity, that my qualification and my experience could serve as an asset to that, to that board and to our community as a whole. Now, mind you, I applied for that position in early December. I had no response from anybody. And this was brought up about a month later in the meeting, but regardless, I genuinely felt that my interest in this conservation-based issue would parallel with my existing relationship with Lauren, council member, you know? In a manner that would give rise to, I don't know, what you might call a mutually beneficial relationship between the city and the district, and the conservation district. Now, ultimately during Monday's meet, uh, January 4th meeting, I agreed that I would withdraw my application for the underlying appointment if there were in fact a conflict of interest. Now, following that meeting, I conducted my own legal research. You know, I'm a lawyer. I, I, and I can, I researched this and I even consulted our, our city attorney on the matter. And neither my research nor the assessment undertaken by our city's attorney concluded that a, a conflict of interest existed. So there was no conflict of interest if I were to be appointed to the Central Clickitack Conservation District Board. So, you know, basically after that happened, I wrote a letter to Terry Nichols, who is the, the chairman of the board of the Central Clickitack Conservation District. And I said, you know what? There's no, I don't see a conflict. Our lawyer doesn't see a conflict, but you know what? Like, I will defer to you. If you think there's an issue here, conflict or no, I will withdraw my application. Now, the response I got was basically saying, we don't think there's a problem here. So I, I did not withdraw my application, you know? So that was January 5th. 5th, let's say. Now, here's the problem. Since then, Lauren Meager, the district manager and area engineer of the Central District, Central Clickitack Conservation District Board, has persisted in undertaking a retaliatory assault on both personally and professionally with the intention to have me withdraw my application to serve on this board.
Justin?
No, 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 no. What, what, yes, Mayor.
Justin? We need to meet in my office tomorrow. Uh, Lauren is welcome to come if he needs to, but I think this is something we don't want to carry on any further. I think everybody knows those details. Thank you for the-
I don't, I don't know, uh, so my concern is that people don't know the details of the harassment that I've been facing from Mr. Meager, who is trying to get me fired on humorous occasions. And so this is my concern is that-
Justin, in my office tomorrow morning.
... address it publicly.
I just, I just muted him.
You need to be in my office tomorrow morning. We have some talking to do.
Uh, for the council and the public, this is Counselor Meager. I should address it publicly and I would just say that there's a lot of inaccuracy there, but, um, I'm happy to provide the full electronic record, but, um, it does, it does really present a big problem the way that the contract was presented and passed through and then additionally the, the challenges that Justin has brought to my own personal place of appointment and my, my employment and my lifelong passion for conservation and, um, that's really a priority for me. Um, so I'm looking forward to help, hopefully finding some good resolution on this and just looking for counsel and the mayor's support to find a good solution for both, uh, all the residents and citizens that I serve within the conservation district, um, as well as the city.
Thank you, Lauren. This matter needs to be resolved and urgently.
Mayor, this, this is Andy. Um, I, I think that some of this needs to be public. I, I, I've seen both, uh, both sides and I think there needs to be some more discussions with both Lauren and Justin. I have seen issues with this. I, I look at the, when the contract was passed for Justin, it was vote, there was majority vote on it and I don't feel like we should get rid of a contract after it was majority passed, just because a few people didn't like it, but that's my own opinion.
Thank you, Andy.
And the, and, and the process there, one of the people passing it asked for a, a reconsideration, which is within Robert's rules. And so, um, I think we just, as council should have done a better job of communicating and having discussion upfront in that process and, um, we could have resulted in a, maybe some mon- contract modifications in some way that helps, um, collaborate and train and, um, teach folks how to be a little bit more, um, effective in their positions potentially. So, um, you know, there's always room for improvement.
Shannon has his hand up.
Uh, Shannon?
I just wanted to bring up the fact that a lot of this, when it started, was the $60,000, um, issue that had come up paying Justin $60,000 or $50 an hour. And you gotta remember as a contractor, he's, he's paying taxes and everything out of that. So he's probably really bringing home $30 an hour as an attorney. And I did investigate what it would cost us for a city planner and the lowest would be $56,000 and the average is actually $73,000 a year and that's not counting benefits.
Thank you, Shannon.
Mayor?
And I have, sorry, I have also read both sides of the emails, so I do believe there is an issue here.
I agree.
Phil passes down. Phil passes down that.
Uh, Phil, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I guess there's a couple of issues here and, um, yes, it's gonna come from me, but in, in the essence of time and moving forward and getting some emotions under control, I'd say we can move, uh, along. Uh, there are some personal, um, matters to be resolved and I think, um, I thank you for calling that, uh, to your office to handle those personal matters. Um, there are matters regarding contract and money and questions of that nature that, um, I guess may be viewed, um, by one or two parties as, uh, a pers- uh, personal attack or not. Um, but I think, uh, in order to keep our group professional, uh, we can resolve the personal matters one way and we can bring the rest to a, a future meeting, uh, on an agenda item, uh, for discussion. I know that, uh, during the, um, much discussion of the contract, there was a clause where the city came out to not, to discontinue the contract or whatnot. So there are options, uh, there. Um, we just need to get everything resolved as peacefully as, as we can. Um, I know, I am, I'm very, very sure that we can. I know that, uh, I brought some issues last council and I think you, um, we, we were able to resolve that. Many meetings took place, um, and we're moving forward on that. So I'm pretty confident that we can move forward on this as well in a professional manner.
Thanks, Phil. Anyone else?
Kevin.
Uh, Kevin Feig.
Yeah, I'm just, my understanding was this was all dropped back on January 4th. It was approved. You, you all know where my, where I stood on it. I haven't mentioned it and all of a sudden it shows its, its head up again. Um, I'd kind of like to move on from this. Um, he's, he's doing the job. Every, it seems that everybody's happy with this job and he's getting paid what she should be happy with. I don't understand why it's coming up again. That's all.
Thanks, Kevin.
Um, I've tried to explain why it's come up again, but I was muted, so, um, I'd like the council and the public to understand the harassment I've been facing because I'm sorry, Mayor, this hasn't been dealt with internally. And I'd like the council and the public to know about this. So if I will, if I may, I'd like to proceed because what has happened here, as I said, is I've been retaliated against by Mr. Re- Mr. Meager.
Justin will discuss this tomorrow in the office. We do not finish this tonight.
I just don't think that that is a, that's a viable solution because-
Well, I do and it stops now.
And Mr.-
Turn it off.
Mr. Meager, Mr. Meager had per-
Let me just create a, hmm. Okay. We're going now to council business and we'll begin, Larry Bellamy will present the first three items of council business. The first being capital outlay for water slash wastewater treatment service truck, the VAC truck. Larry, would you like to begin that?
Okay, this is, this is the capital they purchased for the wastewater treatment plant service truck. It's not the, what'd you call it? The back truck. It's just a service truck for-
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
The water, wastewater staff. The current truck that they have is no longer in service and they're limited to one vehicle, which is like a Chevrolet Suburban type- which is like a Chevrolet Suburban type, maybe a little bit smaller. And they need to have this service truck to replace the service trucks that they, that they did have, um, for work in the, and they have to travel from the wastewater treatment plant out on Wing Road out to the chlorination station and, and sometimes it's very difficult to get in and out of there with, with just a regular vehicle. They really do need a good reliable vehicle and one that they can hook up to a snowplow at a later date so they can have an opportunity to make it into their facilities and check the chlorination and check the operations of the wells. So this is also, this was part of our budget in 2021 and um, it was, it was part of the capital outlay purchases that we approved and they are ready to purchase this truck. The purchase order is through the government, the state of Washington, um, you know, their, their quotes are all, all part of the state, state of Washington low quotes. And the, the request to purchase it is for this service truck and they, they, we use it to carry tools to the site and, and as I said before, it'll be prepped for snowplowing. And this way they can access their, their water sites in the winter and any emergencies that they might have. So it's, it's a, the quote is the vehicle that they need and it's a, it's a Washington State low bid process. So all we have to do is um, purchase it with this invoice and the low bid is through North Sound, North Sound, yeah, North Sound Dwayne Lane. So we would recommend that the council approve a capital outlay request for a purchase of the service truck for the wastewater treatment plant employees at $39,912.5.
Do we have discussion, questions or comments from the council?
I need a motion first.
Do we have a motion on this?
This is Phil. I'm gonna make the motion to go ahead and approve um, the truck requested. I'm very happy that it is gonna be for multi-use, um, so I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve as requested.
Mayor, this is Mylan. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, any questions or comments? Okay, we'll go onto the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. I think our water treatment specialist already got, found a good sensible solution to improve their service and to provide quicker service. The next item is the planning commission appointments and Larry will present that.
Okay, as my explanation indicates, we have a pending land use application process going on for a rezone and a new subdivision. And accordingly, that is a requirement to be heard by the city planning commission under chapter 2.48. And the planning commission is normally of five people and we currently only have two individuals that are willing to, that are currently serving and actually who's um, who's, whose time has expired, so we have to reappoint them as well. But anyway, getting back to the planning commission appointments, there, the city began searching for some people that would be interested. We found Jeannie Morgan, whose resume is attached, and we found Stephen Bento, who is a new, a new resident of Goldendale, but is very interested in, in planning, in planning matters. And he has had some, he's dabbled himself in some development in the place where he came from, I believe, in the Portland Vancouver area. So as, as the planning code indicates under 2.48, at least three members must reside within the city limits and two may reside in the, within the boundaries of their Goldendale River growth boundary. And the mayor has to make these appointments and the, okay, I should say, he would like to make these appointments in order for the planning commission to hold a public hearing. If you have two, you don't have a quorum, so we need at least three. We have four, which would even be better. And so we'd like to present these two reappointments and two new appointments so that we can go ahead and start, continue with the process of responding to the request for a rezone subdivision application process. So the mayor is requesting and has made appointments of Sherri Carver, Martin Taylor, Jeannie Morgan, Stephen Bento, to serve on the Goldendale City, City Planning Commission. And in accordance with the planning commission statute or code, the, these must be confirmed. These mayor, the mayor's appointments must be confirmed by the city council. So we would recommend, especially in light of a pending application, that we go ahead and, and confirm these mayor appointments to have them on the planning commission so we can have a, so we can have a quorum and continue with the planning commission process or the planning process for these, for this application.
Thank you, Larry.
Larry, this is Phil. I have a question.
Okay.
Amazing. Um, and I think you, you may have just answered it, but um, uh, looking over Mr. Stephen Bento's resume, I just noticed the address being out of Vancouver there at the top left. So is he a full-time new resident to our community and?
Yes, he just purchased a house at 326 West Court and he's working full-time at the hospital.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That was just my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion um, to approve the mayor's recommendations for reappointments and for reappointment of the members for this commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have further comments or questions before we conclude? I move to confirm, it has been moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's appointments of Sherri Carver, Martin Taylor, Jeannie Morgan, and Stephen Bento to serve on the Goldendale Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
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 If not, the motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. We appreciate the service of these good people too, on something that is very important to the growth of Goldendale. Next item has to do with questions regarding a detailed budget and Larry will explain our situation and what we hope to do here.
Okay, we had some questions about producing a detailed budget that was, that had the bar, they call them the bars numbers. The numbers on the, the left-hand side are called bars numbers, budgeting, accounting, something, reporting system, and it's through the state auditor's office that these bars numbers are issued. And so Phil had requested that we look at, we be shown a more detailed budget that includes all these account numbers. So this is the most, the, the attachment that I put in the council packet is called an expenditure report and it lists each one of the bars account numbers and a description of that number and then how much money was spent in the period, which would be the month period. So this would only include half a month's worth of uh, of funds being spent or appropriated. And then the fiscal is year-to-date numbers, budget is just what it says, the budget for that particular account, and then the percentage of the total that's been spent on balance. And so this report is, is what, what I would consider a more detailed approach and we can produce this document. I think that that would be a good thing to have this council have, is to have this document more on a monthly basis probably would be appropriate because then you can measure how much is being spent and take a look at the spending, spending that's going on in the, in the council packet. So this is something that we could produce on a monthly basis. I think they would, and then it would have month-to-date figures for all of that. And we would produce it somewhere around the halfway through the following month. So for the period, for the month of January, then we would have a report to the council on, by the 15th of February. So then normally, just to kinda give you an idea of the budget process that we've used in the past, is, is then on a quarterly basis, I review the, the budget document in a little bit more detail. And if there are changes by fund that are necessary, then I take a look and I contact the budget committee and we repropose at the budget committee, uh, possible amendments to the initial budget ordinance. So we have an initial budget ordinance, which you'll see is that third column. And then if things are, if, if we've approved something that wasn't in the budget, then we can talk about how we need to amend the budget to reflect, well, reflect what was, what was approved by council. If at the, then, when the budget amendment ordinance is, is approved by the budget committee, I should say recommended by the budget committee, they would then forward it on to the full council for review and approval. And then that would give you a clear picture of what's going on in the budget. That's just a little bit overview of what, what goes on with the budgeting process and what we could provide as a tool for a more detailed budget document. If you would like me, if, I guess it's open for discussion if you had further questions regarding what I presented here.
We have somebody raising their hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Larry, this is Phil.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you for, for that report. It actually definitely explains a little bit better of what I was trying to figure out and I'm not a numbers person, so I'm trying to keep everything straight. It's definitely a little harder for some of us. So this definitely works to explain that. Um, and I think, yeah, moving forward, yes, monthly reports are important, as you mentioned, would be excellent to kind of keep us informed and a phrase of where we're going with things. Um, I also thank you for the report on the other request that I made regarding the attorney piece. Um, that also helped me understand what's going on.
Okay.
So I think that takes care of that for me at least.
Thank you.
For, for now, for now.
Are there other comments or questions?
Tom, Mayor, this is Mylan. This is a, very well done. Uh, some offices I've been in before will do it quarterly, but then we decide to do this monthly, that, that's fine too. So again, it's a very good job of putting this together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mylan. Larry put a lot of hours and time in this when he doesn't really have a lot of time sometimes. Appreciate the good work, Larry, very much. Any other comments or questions from the council? We don't need a motion, we're just discussing, but if there are things you want to raise, this is a good time to do it.
I'm ready for my report.
Well, we've still got, uh-
Oh, okay.
We have one more piece of council business when we amended the agenda.
That's right.
And Phil Ontiveros will present this, this is his request to move funds that were, have been in the past, an EMS thing that is no longer utilized and I'm gonna let Phil present it and explain it and we'll have a motion on that afterwards. Phil?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, first let me start with thanking everybody that's been involved over the last couple weeks. I know, uh, definitely brought some issues there and lots of meetings took place. But I'm glad that we were able to all get together and move forward. This is a, as I mentioned in our, in our meeting, um, one of the couple of passions I have is definitely the EMS service in our community. Many may not know, I do have a son with special needs, um, many trips to the ER, many ambulance rides, many life flight, um, flights to children's hospitals. And that is, um, one of the main reasons we moved to Washington State. Definitely the cleaner air and the hospitals around us, but we did not want the big city life that we would otherwise be required to. So um, this is a huge passion to find the EMS service. And I wanna thank, um, Will from the EMS, our new director for EMS, um, as well as Tony Gilmer for the presentation because, um, they were able to explain a little bit better than I am, um, the, the strong need that we need, that we have here in our community. Um, and thank you, Mayor, and Larry, um, and Chief Noah Hom for, uh, working on this. I know there's many, many things we're trying to work to, uh, to get some funding in place. Um, so while the city of Goldendale, um, the administration, fire department administration, uh, city administration, um, everybody's looking to see where we can find these funds, um, approximately $20,000 to $25,000, um, as I was mentioning earlier, is the cost of this equipment. So I would respectfully request that the city council approve securing and transferring the budget line, um, from Larry's report, uh, 0010000525100. Uh, it was previously paid to Rural Seven Rescue Services in the amount of $5,000 on an annual basis. Um, and that was for covering that EMS gap that was mentioned between ambulance calls, between, um, the ambulance from Dallas Port coming up and such. The fire department, um, has developed EMS program, they've been working, um, Chief Hom mentioned, um, at the last council meeting, average response times for volunteer department is five minutes to go en route. So it's definitely, um, a huge program and a huge undertaking. Uh, the line item, as I mentioned, was previously paid annually, um, to provide the backup EMS service in the city. And since the city, um, the service is now being provided by Goldendale Fire, the budget would support the department, the department's commitment to provide the quality care and response to our community on a continued annual basis. Um, and I think as mentioned by our EMS directors, there is always gonna be a need for that support, uh, the need for the volunteer departments and the rural communities to provide that support. And, um, you know, a huge undertaking by Chief Hom to start the EMS program and provide better service to our citizens. And that has been done without the adequate support and budget up to now, which goes to say, um, how much dedication and how much work, uh, the department and Chief Hom has have put towards that. Uh, to make this work without any money behind it- To make this work without any money behind it is a huge, huge, what do you say? Huge undertaking and a huge accomplishment. So with that, I would ask, you know, that the council move those funds to the fire department so they can once again be utilized to provide EMS service to our community and have that support. Hopefully with that, we won't have to resort to collecting pennies from the community. You know, but if we need to, we need to. And I know that, like I mentioned, the administration is working diligently at securing the rest of the funds, of course, that $25,000.
Thank you, Phil. Do we have council concurrence on this point? That this might be moved from one place to another? Any discussion or questions?
This is Shannon, I concur.
Thank you.
This is Mylan, it's fine with me.
This is Andy, I agree.
This is Lauren, I agree.
Kevin?
It's Kevin, I agree.
Very good. With that, the council has concurred with the proposal that Phil has made. And we appreciate the effort he put into this. This was nothing easy whatsoever to do. He saw something that we could do. And he saw it long before anybody else did, I think, as far as how we might be able to get the money for that life pack. And we appreciate your efforts, Phil. And this action will be taken.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate everybody's support on this. Thank you.
We'll go on now to the report of officers and city administrator. We'll begin with Larry Bellamy, our city administrator.
Okay. Pretty much one thing to report. It's going to take a little bit to go through it. But in order, in order to move the process forward, which the process I'm looking for is the process to get out to bid the project on Byers Street for the replacement of the water line and the reconstruction and improvement of the street and the storm drainage system and the sidewalk. We had hoped that we would be able to just go move forward with hiring Pioneer to do the work because they were local. But after consultation with the engineer at Transportation Improvement Board, she indicated that I would have to go through an advertisement process and a selection process, which we have done, and we have completed that. We received six responses. Actually, I should go back and say the process that she recommended was to advertise for annual requests for statements of qualifications. So I did that in late December, early January. And then we received, like I said, six responses for, from that request for qualifications. And by the way, I did actually confirm with her as well that the process that we used, which included the advertisement for, that was in the newspaper. She said that was sufficient, so we're on the right track. But anyway, just to finish off with the responses, we received responses from Pioneer Surveying Engineering, RH2, HLA Engineering Surveying, Gray Osborne, Tennyson Engineering, and Quanta Utility Engineering Services. And we ranked these particular firms in certain disciplines. So the four different disciplines that we wanted to look for specifically were their experience and qualifications in water wastewater treatment, water distribution and sewer collection, streets and surveying. And we also looked back, the mayor and I looked back at history a little bit. And in 2020, we utilized RH2, which has quite a staff of people that deal with water and wastewater treatment. And they actually have a very good staff person that helps us with our SCADA system, which is very important to keep the systems running and free from errors and calls in the middle of the night and all that kind of stuff. So the SCADA system is a very important piece of the puzzle. And it's been a great find for the city of Goldendale. So we want to recommend for 2021, Pioneer Surveying and Engineering for water distribution, sewer collection, street and surveying. And then RH2, we would like to recommend using the consultant, that consultant for water and wastewater treatment plan, for water and wastewater treatment. And the mayor and I would respectfully request that the council concur with this selection. And then we can begin the process to negotiate a contract for engineering services on the Byers Street reconstruction and improvement project with Pioneer Surveying Engineering. The earlier we can get this plan out and the specifications and the bidding documents ready, the sooner we can take advantage of the early bidding climate. The standard rule is the earlier in the year that you can get projects out to bid, the better chance you have at a more reasonable price. So we would like to get moving on this. And we would ask that the council concur with those selections.
This is Shannon.
This is Mylan, I'll concur.
This is Phil, I concur.
This is Andy, I concur.
This is Kevin, I concur.
This is Lauren, I concur.
Is that it? Okay.
Yeah, very good. The council has concurred with the explanations in the report and the proposal that Larry has made. Thank you all, the cooperation is very much appreciated. And things to be done on Byers Street will be exciting for everyone. The next will be remarks by our council members. And we'll begin with Andy Hall, our mayor pro tem. Andy?
Mayor, I have nothing at this moment. I will be in touch with you and Larry in the coming days.
Very good. Lauren?
I just want to, I guess, apologize to the community for this distraction and assure everyone that I did not intentionally harass anybody. I may have been too assertive about performance requirements and responsiveness. And just was very excited to be able to work on the Origins Committee and represent my community. That became nearly impossible to do. And so I was maybe a little frustrated in that process. And so my hope was that we could get someone with the training and experience in planning. And maybe that could be used as a training opportunity for our consultants. But I don't know where we're going with this. And I apologize to everyone for this situation and distraction. There'll be more to come.
Thank you, Lauren. Mylan Wallin?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to just again say a thank you to Tony and Will on the great job they're doing on running the annual service in our county.
Absolutely.
That's all I have here.
Thank you, Mylan. Kevin Feok?
Yes, I also would like to thank the fire department and the EMS system. And that's it. I hope you all have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Kevin. Shannon Elton, do you have something you'd like to report or talk about?
I have nothing right now. I'll contact you tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Phil Ontevados?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it short, I think I've said plenty. Just want to thank you, everybody, for bearing with me the last couple of weeks. Trying to get myself more involved, and other council members are doing the same. I want to thank you, everybody, that's worked on the last couple of things. I got a response from police chief on my questions regarding that in a very timely manner, very fast response. Thank you, Larry, for working on all those questions I had. Plenty of documentation to keep me busy. I guess I asked for that, so thank you. And again, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Will and Tony, for the job they're doing. Trying to do the best in a small community is hard. And thank Noah Hom and his assistant, Stephen, for their work on all this. So we'll continue working. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Phil. Shannon?
You already got him.
Oh, did I get Shannon? Okay, sorry. The next is the mayor's remarks. And we've had quite a night. And I apologize that it went the way it did, but it's something that had to be stopped. But I'm counting on our council to work as closely as possible together. We have an incredibly strong and qualified and professional working city staff with some difficulties shown right now. But the thing is, if we don't work together, council and city, we're not going to get anywhere. This town will slowly slip into a gridlock where we don't do anything but argue. We need to do our very best to work together. I'll do anything I can to help this process go forward. I am incredibly proud of the professionalism of our police department, our public works staff, as well as our fire department volunteers. People that work for this city work hard. And they need praise better than some of the criticism they've received lately. It's just not right. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry, one more thing, I think you brought up with the police department and the work that they do. I hate to leave this in this manner, but I think the events of tonight kind of overshadowed Officer Leo Lucatero's great job. I'm personally aware of that event, that incident. And that is a huge, huge praise. A lot of work to be an incident involving our community and another state, many, many states over. So that is huge. And I don't want, you know, everything else in the discussion that happened to overshadow this great work and the work that the police department had.
You're exactly right. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
And we'll be exploring with the chief other ways to recognize Officer Lucatero. With that, we'll go to public comment. Are there any people on the line that would like to make public comments?
Dan Christopher.
Okay, Dan Christopher.
Thank you, Mayor. First, this is County Commissioner Dan Christopher. I want to thank the city and the council members for all that you do for the residents of the city of Goldendale. I'm either always on your meetings or watching them later via Nancy's recordings. So Nancy, I know you're watching, thank you for your recordings. I wanted to address a couple of things. Phil's comments in the last meeting about the life pack, I brought that up with our economic development department. They should have reached out to the city already. Please get in touch with them about possible county funding for help through Casapita. Also with Phil's comments about the Main Street revitalization, that was something that I campaigned on as well. And I would like to see, so same thing, if you guys can get something worked out to possibly present to the county's economic development for possible consideration, for county help funding that project. You know, if you have my support. Other than that, I'd like to extend to the mayor, Larry, and me of the council members. My email address and my county phone number is on the county website. Please feel free to reach out to me if there's anything I can do to help you guys out or to help better serve the citizens of Goldendale. So with that, I'm gonna take my whole three minutes. You've had a busy meeting, and thank you all, guys.
Great job, Commissioner. Thank you. Anyone else on the line?
Melissa Wheeler.
Melissa Wheeler, three minutes, and your name and address.
Hi, sorry, it's actually Theon Wheeler. It's my, for some reason, my middle name comes up.
Okay.
I don't mean to bore you guys once again. But I was curious about the person that's been going up and down Main Street and where I live, trying to do, pick up like metal out of the easements? Do you know anything about that? Or are you familiar with that going on in town?
This is Chief Hom, I agree. This was brought to my attention today. And one of the things that we're looking at is to see, I know on the private property side of the sidewalk, you know, is your private property. And then from the sidewalk to the city street is city easement area.
And I'm here for that.
And I think what, the way we're gonna address this is they're not trespassing, from what I can tell. But, you know, it is city property. And if somebody's metal detecting and they're digging, I think in that area, we might be able to say, no, you can't dig. You can't dig up city property without, you know, city permission or permit. So we're looking into that. Go ahead.
Maybe I didn't question it right. Like what, you, so you guys did not initiate it, right? So whoever's doing this was not initiated by the city?
No.
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 Okay, all right. That's all I needed really to know, again.
Okay, yeah, this sounds like just some citizen taking upon himself to go metal hunting.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
That's the only other thing. And honestly, I am just so proud of everything that's going on right now, you guys. I, you know, I've been feeling it in my own heart. We all have to be accountable for ourselves. And we gotta stand up and be accountable for everything that we're doing in this life. And I am so proud of everything that I am seeing going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All of you, good night.
Do we have, we don't have other people on the line?
Yeah, no, it's Justin here. I'd like to make a quick comment before I get muted, which is that I'm really ashamed of the restriction on public discourse that occurred tonight. And on the, you know, on the topic of accountability that just came up, I'm really saddened by the lack of accountability that has been prevented through the lack of conversation tonight. And if the council members and the public would like to know more about how a public official, a council member has harassed.
I'd like to, what was called, when a board, the individual was not called upon by the mayor and it would be nice for speaker.
All right, thank you, Phil. All right, take care, guys. You know, you can find me if you want to talk about what's really going on here. So, thank you, Phil.
Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn the city council meeting for February 1st, 2021?
This is Mylan, so I'll move.
This is Phil, I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the city council for February 1st, 2021. Our next meeting will be February 16th, 7:00 PM.
Is that a Tuesday?
Pardon me?
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Monday is a holiday. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.